Is absent, so I'm filling in for him. Staff here, we have our senior planner, Megan. We have Deputy County Attorney Charmaine Reed. And we have Lori Hall. And we have some IT staff here tonight. This commission is an advisory board for the Natrona County Commission. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each of the applications on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. These hearings are recorded and there'll be written minutes of this meeting. After the commission holds a public hearing, unless an applicant is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public meeting on the same application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor that may address the commission, then those opposed to address the commission. Finally, the applicant may be given a brief rebuttal. When the chair recognizes you, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address before giving your comments. This is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission. If a person's conduct is out of order, the chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues to conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave. With that, third item on the agenda is the approval of the April 12th meeting minutes. Everyone get a chance to take a look at those?
I move to accept the meetings, meeting minutes from April 12th as written.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, sign them by by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan Regulation Amendment and Update. With that, I'd like the staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let me pull up my computer here real quick. And I might be able to run this PowerPoint. We shall see. But tonight, we, staff would like to present to you the amendments to the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. For the past approximately six months, the Development Department has been working in conjunction with our consultant, Logan Simpson, to update the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. We're pleased to present the final draft of the plan for you tonight. Much time and effort was spent on the 2004 plan, and the efforts of the past months have attempted to build on the work that was completed in 2004. Updated data and charts have been included. However, the majority of the plan is focused on reconfirming the direction of the goals and policies and the future land use map within the plan. Some key changes that were made include updates to the future land use map, mainly with a focus on a smaller commercial area on the mountain. Revised future land use categories tailored to uses that are specific and most prolific prevalent on Casper Mountain. And updates to existing conditions information. And the ultimate success of this plan depends on how well it is carried out. While it's not officially adopted regulations, the plan is designed to be a guide to assist the county in accomplishing the goals set out in the plan, as well as in the 2016 Natrona County Development Plan. Future amendments to our development regulations will work to ensure that the regulations further the goals provided in this plan. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the amendments to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, and that they be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for public comment and adoption. And if you like, I can do the PowerPoint. I can answer questions, or if there's any comments.
What's the board's preference?
Can you just summarize the changes, like what the gross changes were?
Yeah, so, let's see. I guess, just a little background for everybody, and the reasons why we decided to update the plan. I wasn't present, we have some new staff members, but when Logan Simpson was getting initial feedback from stakeholders in the community on the zoning rewrite, update, rewrite, they found, a lot of people were commenting that we needed to make changes to our MR1 and MR2 zone district standards. That being said, the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan would be the guiding document we use to make changes or amendments to our regulations. And since it had not been updated since 2004, it was decided that we needed to update the plan. So just a quick timeline, we've been working since about September. There were two public meetings, one up on the mountain and one out at the Ag Resource Center to get input, really focusing on the goals, policies, and implementation section, and confirming that those goals and policies were still applicable to the plan. There's a short list of dates of the public engagement that we did. And here, the key changes really are with that future land use map, focusing the commercial area around Hogedon and the ski tourism lodging type activities that we see up on the mountain and kind of want to focus the commercial uses around. Revising the future land use categories on the map to tailor them more to the Casper Mountain uses and what we see developing up on the mountain. And then just updating that, the existing conditions information, since things have changed some since 2004. So now, here we are tonight. If you all have, you've all seen this draft. If you have any recommendations, changes you think that should be made, that tonight would be a night to make those comments. And then those would be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners, and this plan will be put out for a public comment period. Be prior to the Commissioners adopting it. But, you know, I really, we really didn't want to downplay all the work that was done in 2004 on this plan. The committee back then spent a lot of time on it, a lot of resources, and so really, as we said, it's building on that 2004 plan, confirming that, you know, what still exists, exists, that our goals and our policies still align with the community's vision for Casper Mountain, because that's what we really wanted this to be too, is a community-based plan, not for us to sit up here and tell everybody what they, what we want to see. So we really strive for that public engagement and getting people to tell us, hey, are we on the right track? What do we need to change? How can we make our rules so that they'll meet the goals of the plan? Hopefully, that answers your questions, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mitchell.
Further comments, or mispronounceds?
Just on figure nine, that's the 2020 zone, so have you changed that at all?
Let me flip to that page. Figure nine?
Yeah, I'm kind of confused. It says 2020 zoning, is that, is that, is that changing at all, or is that the new proposed change?
No, that, so that's the zoning as it exists on the mountain right now. Or as of 2020.
And that's going to stay the same?
There's been discussions of reducing the area of MR1 that I've heard from the public and from staff within the county, that the MR1 zoning district extends too far north off the mountain, that a lot of properties that are perhaps within MR1 really don't belong in MR1. So I think that that'll be something for the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, that they'll be taking a look at after we adopt the updated zoning regulations. And reducing that area of MR1 zoning.
Ms. Mitchell, just as, I guess, a process conversation, this'll go out, it has not gone out for public comment yet, then?
No. So tonight is the commission, the Planning Commission, making amendments to a plan and recommending those to the Board of County Commissioners, who will then put it out for a public comment period before they have a hearing to adopt.
So would this be the last time we would see this item in front of us?
I would say tonight, the, Mr. Chairman, you all can make comments, recommendations, things you might think should be changed or need, still need to be addressed. And then there'd also be that time during the public comment period, if you have any, you know, think of anything additionally that you'd want to add.
I've got a fairly good list here, I guess, if we want to, we can jump into it a little bit. Megan, can you, was campgrounds addressed at all during this? Kind of what the recommendation or goals were with campgrounds on the mountain?
I think that's going to be more addressed within the zoning regulation amendments. I agree, the zoning regulations lack a clear, good definition for campground and their site, more specifically, their site development standards. So I think you'll see more of that addressed in the zoning amendments when those come before you. You know, we talk about campgrounds in the plan a little bit, and that it's something that the people want to see on the mountain, but I, you know, coming up with those development standards for campgrounds, I think are going to be the most important thing with the zoning update. Because right now, we don't have a good definition, and we have no development standards for campgrounds. And I think that has caused, you know, in the seven months I've been here, I think I've observed, that's what's caused a lot of tension when that type of use comes up, is we don't have any development standards for those. So I'd say, the plan says yes, they're definitely a use we want to see and allow on the mountain. But those development standards will be for campgrounds will be set out in the zoning rules.
Zoning. How about the, like, the use of C cans or accessory buildings? Is that also going to be something we look at the zoning resolution more for than this?
Correct. And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, remember, this is a guiding document, so this is what, how the community wants to see, what do we want to see on the mountain? Because we say that's what we want to see, that's not holding us to a rule that that's all that there can be. We use our regulations, our subdivision regulations, our zoning regulations, our building code, to help us reach the goals that we set out in this plan. So imagine the CMLUP being the big idea up here, and we build our rules to get up there.
When I was looking through the document, I did not see where ag use was addressed. There's, you know, substantial amounts on the west end and even the face and extreme east and west that is used for ag use, is there's grazing and commercial agriculture occurring. And I didn't see where that was addressed.
That's a very good comment. I will make note of that, Mr. Chairman, and have Logan Simpson take a look back at that. And I think that might be part of the MR1, when we look at reducing the area of MR1 and perhaps taking it to urban ag or ram. But that's very good comments, and I'm going to rely a lot on the public comments and your comments, since I'm so new to the community and I don't know as much about historic uses and what's going on on the mountain. So, thank you. Very applicable.
Reviewing agencies, as I just, as I think of few of these, just if you could give me a yes or no, if they have seen this document and commented on it. Casper Mountain Fire?
Yes.
Natrona County Parks?
Yes.
City of Casper?
Maybe.
The BLM?
Yes.
YDOT?
Maybe.
Those were some of the key players I could see up there. I mean, in particular, City of Casper actually has a portion, Hogedon is annexed into the City of Casper.
That's true. I will get with Planner Collins and ensure that they've taken a look at it.
Can, on the goals and policies, there's some, some sections in here that I guess I didn't understand the, understand it, maybe you can elaborate a little further. One here is resource preservation, protect natural resources for sustained public use and enjoyment. And the policy would be using zoning controls, land purchases and trades to protect unique natural resources. I guess that was on page 35.
I was about to say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what page are you on?
Page 35. And it's mainly the land purchases and trades that caught my eye.
That, perhaps, those aren't, those wouldn't be good policies or good strategies for implementation of that goal? Or people might be opposed to it?
I don't know, you know, I would, I'd love to hear the, the public comment on that. Again, to your point, this is the, the citizens' plan.
Correct.
And what does the citizenry want for us to put in rules? And what goals and objectives do they want us to enforce?
Correct.
And that one, that one just stood out as me as a, one of curiosity.
Okay. I will make note. And I know a few of you attended the open house, especially the first one up at Hogedon, and how we kind of did that one was all of these goals and policies from the 2004 plan were put up on big boards, on easels, and everybody was invited to go around and, you know, make comments or star them. And I don't recall that one sticking out to anybody, but I will definitely make note of your comment, Mr. Chairman.
Right above it on recreation, some number of years ago, there was a KLJ report on parks and recreation up on the mountain. Was any of those findings incorporated in this guiding document?
It was a study that you, the county hired KLJ to do?
That's correct.
Okay. I will, I will double check that Logan Simpson has seen that study.
Facilities and services, maintain and update firefighting facilities and equipment, and continue to provide financial assistance for fire protection. And I guess I, I'm aware that there is like a county mill, if you live up there, that then goes to the fire district, but I'm not sure what other, are there other funding sources that the county provides to Casper Mountain Fire?
You know, and I'm not sure on that either answer, Mr. Chairman, either. I know that the Building Department and the building official is working with Casper Mountain Fire in the, as they try to regroup and get the Firewise program going back. So I'll start that one and follow back up with the building official.
That, that was definitely an overriding comment I had in this document, was the previous document, there was a whole Firewise section, and it gave a whole list of recommendations like recommended building materials, road width, distance propane tanks from, from buildings, and that was, that was related to fire mitigation, trying to reduce that fire. And from what I can see, a lot of that has been shifted?
Right.
To a different document from this one?
Those would be, so those are, you know, getting into, in our plan, we don't want to get into specific distances for propane tanks, the other standards that you mentioned. Those would be things for our zoning regulations. So, you know, the goal in here might be to incorp, to help mitigate fire on the mountain. We want to incorporate parts of the urban wildlife wildfire interface code. And I've been working with Building Official Smith on taking a look at what we have in the MR1 and MR2 districts now for the protection zones and the required fire mitigation items and standards that people have to meet. But again, we wanted to take those specific things that are essentially rules, saying you have to have your propane tank this far, you have to clear this much space around your home. Out of a plan like this, ensure those are in our rules and, and make sure our plan says we want to protect, maintain, mitigate the risk of wildfire on the mountain. And then through our zoning rules and implementation of those standards is how we're going to do that.
So, looking at a, maybe a higher level question, then we talk about residential density, and that it should be low. Do we, do we define in here what, what we call low? Is that one to five, one dwelling unit per five acres, one dwelling unit to 10, or?
I'm trying to remember if we put specific numbers in here. I know that the land use categories, sorry, there's a lot of information in this plan. Let me get to my marked up.
You're doing wonderful. I've thrown a lot of very granular-
They're very good questions, Mr. Chairman. And I'm glad that people, some, you know, everybody's taking the time to look at this, because it's definitely not something for just ours.
I'm not sure that that's what you're looking at. It talks about lot size, amount of the MR1, MR2, and UA.
On-
Page 18. I don't know if that's what you're proposing, or whether that's just-
I think that section, that section is definite, is talking about what we have in, currently in our zoning regulations, that minimum lot size is five acres, and 50% open space. Yes, okay, so here, go, we're looking, we'll be looking at page 39, back in the land use plan chapter. And those land use categories on the future land use map that we revised. So you'll see in the rural category, the minimum lot size is recommended to be 10 acres, utilization of individual wells and septic systems. The residential category talks about, you know, the already developed residential lots from under a quarter acre to 10 acres, and that we want residential to accommodate the existing and new single-family dwellings at a density no greater than one dwelling per five acres, as the terrain allows, and talks about what types of infrastructure we'd like to see used. It taught, and then the paragraph below talks about why those densities were selected.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I guess, you know, you said your minimum lot size is 10, I mean, and maybe somebody can explain, but, you know, MR1 says the minimum lot size is 10, and MR2 is the minimum lot size is five. My understanding is the zoning regulations kind of, kind of precede the Casper Mountain. So, I mean, what if you expanded MR1 to include, I mean, I guess they split it up before, but now we're talking about different, different sizes. What if you made, you know, all MR1, just combined MR1 and MR2 into one, into one zone?
So that's-
So that it's 10 acres.
That's actually what we're looking at with the zoning regulations, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mitchell. And so again, that's why the plan here says the minimum lot size is recommended to be 10 acres. You know, that's what we heard, we heard a lot of feedback about lot sizes and future splits and, and what we should allow up on the mountain. You know, as well as discussion about, you know, maybe you need, different or unique development standards, we could implement cluster development, saying, okay, sure, you, you know, if you developed it one per 10 acres, you could have 10 houses on 10 lots. Well, hey, we'll still let you have those 10 houses, but you're going to put them all on this small part, you know, small part of your parcel, and have community infrastructure and leave that open space, so we don't have one house every 10 acres spaced out in all those septic systems. So I think that you'll find, as you look through the plan, we're making recommendations for the types of densities people said they want to see, but also trying to incorporate recommendations of unique, you know, design standards and unique subdivision, subdivisions that we can use to allow people to still develop their property as they want, but also keep the mountain with the open space that people have said they want to see up there.
That's your question. Looking at my, it's noted in here that, I guess, we have, we've tagged the financing options for funding. It says, "Previous sections have outlined several action items, some of which require increased funding in order to be implemented." And then we list the Natrona County General Fund as a funding source, the City of Casper as a second funding source, user fees, development fees, BLM State Forestry. As I look at that, I just, I wonder how realistic it is that, in our current environment, that those folks are a legitimate funding source.
And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I don't disagree with you at all. This was a section that we had a lot of discussion on. And I would say that that list is, you know, it's not inclusive, it's not comprehensive, it's not ranking them in any order of where the funds might come from. I think that, you know, again, as the plan is something we're striving for, reaching for, you know, we need to mention, all these things cost money, and the money has to come from somewhere. So I think, are they realistic? Some of them maybe, some of them may not be, some may be more realistic one year versus the other. But I think just, those are potential sources that we identified when we go and look at all the projects and things we want to see happen on the mountain, and how we're going to pay for that.
Thank you.
Of course, on these, you list these roads on page 62, 63. Are those all accessible? And looks like most of them are all maintained by the county, is that correct? They're listed as county roads?
They reidentified all of the county roads. You know, some of them, we made notes, like Jackson Canyon Road. I know you all had some experiences with that in the last year. You'll, you'll see that note, Jackson Canyon Road is not shown on the maps in this plan as its status as a public road is unclear. So I think that, you know, we put it in as an appendix just for the information. It was very helpful to me, as somebody new to the community and, and didn't know about a lot of the roads, where they were. But again, that's why we put it in there as an appendix, striving to just put as much information as we have in here without calling out, hey, the county's going to maintain this to this standard, or, or setting rules or standards that aren't meant for this plan, I guess, would be my best response to that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Zeal.
I've been shown roads up there that were considered public access roads, and they didn't look hardly passable.
Right.
And they get confused, somebody, there's a driveway close by, and somebody thinks that's the road.
Right.
And it leads to two different people's properties.
And I, I've heard a lot about that, I guess, since I came right at the fall and the winter, and I haven't been up on the mountain a lot. I know there's been discussion within the county about having an outside or even internal staff doing a study and identifying all of the roads up there, and then working to get them dedicated, get the easements that we need for the roads that are there. But that project hasn't been, hasn't even been started, let alone completed. I think, too, as you all see, these mountain subdivisions come along, you'll note in last month with the two mountain subdivisions, that we're requiring them to, the one that's on a county road, they're dedicating that 33 feet as right-of-way to the county, so no more access easements, getting those things taken care of as we can through subdivision applications. And then the county will have to take those steps to do the rest of the mountain, when they have the funding and the time and, and everything that that process will entail.
So another question. You have, you have any, came up with that Jackson Canyon Road, there was, you know, fire access, there was a road that was chained off and there's some question as to what the, what the fire access roads and I assume the fire department sets that up as far as what roads are, or what roads are, are fire access? That, that was just an issue that came up with that. And I don't know if it's our problem, but it's probably, you know, the fire department's issue of trying to figure out what roads they need to access.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mitchell, I, I watched that meeting and I saw the discussion on the fire access roads and, you know, that, that was, it was a tough issue and, and how to decide what's, and what's what and what's not and everything that happened up on the mountain in the last, excuse me, 100 years and the federal government saying, these are roads and these aren't and pri, you know, taking private property from people in the past. I would say as we move forward, when we, when you all, when we bring subdivision applications before you all, staff is going to require, uh, that subdivision roads be dedicated right of ways to the public. And if we need to, you know, address existing two tracks that are perhaps fire access roads, you know, I, I will always recommend us looking at unique solutions. Perhaps it's just an access easement that is there if needed and we can help the fire, Casper Mountain Fire keep an inventory of those for if and when, you know, something happens up there and they need that. I think though, that we're just going to have to, you know, make sure we have solid rules for what we want to see for dedication of roads, follow those and then each, take each, each case as we get it and look at unique solutions that we can propose. So they're getting their property developed and the community still feels safe and fires comfortable with being able to get through a sub, a new subdivision if they ever need to.
On the note of roads, um, what was revised or changed in this one to address the, the road conversation that came up?
Uh, the, the, just the statements that we want. The county would like to see dedicated public right of ways. And, and that's already a standard in our subdivision regulations. And something that staff, as we move forward, you know, is we're going to make, make sure that that standard, we've set it and we want to see it, you know? If, I guess, what, Mr. Chairman, as I watched the, uh, Jackson Canyon Road and Mountain Acres subdivision issue, there's a lot of discussion about what Jackson Canyon Road was or wasn't. But the developer had his application in front of us, the county, and in order to get that subdivision permit, he has to meet the standards that we want. So that road should have been dedicated to the public, should have been constructed and that's that. Whether it followed the historic trail for what Jackson Canyon Road may or may not be, you know, that's up to him how he wanted to design the subdivision, but our standard is you dedicate the road to the public. So I think in the future, if we get something like that, we, we just need to review our rules, know what we require and just putting those standards out there so that there can't be discussion over public, private, what we want. And the Casper Mountain Plan, uh, we made sure to say we want publicly dedicated roads on the mountain for subdivision and fire and emergency access and all that, that entails.
Any other comments before I open the public hearing? With that, I'd open the public hearing for, uh, the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. It would be the 2022 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. Those that would like to come up and speak in favor of this plan, now would be your time to come up. Second call, any of those want to speak in favor, forward? And lastly, anyone wanting to come forward to speak in favor of adopt, of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan? Now let's move on, uh, to any of those that are opposed to adopting this 2022 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. Anybody in opposition of this hearing?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Robert, I don't think I knew you, but his Doug Haupt, uh, large, one of the largest landowners in this plan. Um, Jason, I know, and Chad and Matt, I know, um, and y'all. When we started this whole thing, I was informed that there was just some complications in the 2004 plan. Uh, 2004 plan, I was part of. Um, there was a lot of work put into it by a lot of people, volunteer hours like you guys and thank you for your, your time that you're doing here. I was informed that there would be a committee of residents from Casper, Casper Mountain landowners, and we would hash out a few things. And I volunteered to be on that committee and nothing ever happened with it. The plan you're talking about and voting on tonight, the public hasn't even seen it. And I, I don't know how much time you've had to look at it, but I was under the impression that there was just a few problems and we could take, my, my recommendation is to take the 2004 and leave it alone and address the few problems that we have with it, make amendments to it, and it could have been done and saved a whole bunch of money without Logan Simpson. Um, I don't see any, I don't see where we are any worse now ahead of where we were six months or a year ago. Uh, that's my opinion, but I, but I haven't seen it. So it's really hard for us to make public comment on something we haven't seen. You can have all the billboards and the chalkboards and stuff like they had at the meetings, but it really isn't telling us what we're losing or what we're gaining with the changes. So, um, my recommendation is that we leave the 2004 in place. We addressed a few problems that we have with it. If there's problems, let's address them. We did a change. But we need to, we need to get somebody that's knowledgeable, whether it's from the city or the mountain or you guys, and form a little committee like that's what we talked about doing here first, of four, five, six knowledgeable people with common sense and then make recommendations to you guys instead of a firm out of Denver or Salt Lake or where, where all the United States. And they're dealing with cities, not little Casper one on, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion. We could get a committee together, have a few people figure it out, give us your, give out our recommendations to you guys. You can look at it and, and use what we have from Logan Simpson and, and make these changes. But I don't think we're ready to do that tonight. That's my opinion. Uh, because we haven't even seen it, I don't know if you've seen it. Uh, Jason just brought up about six, seven items that need to be addressed. As far as fire access, I don't think there's a landowner up there and it wouldn't matter if, if you didn't want the fire people to come through. I've been through all these fires. I've been laying up there for 30 years and the fire department has bolt cutters and it takes them about two seconds to cut your gate and they're going through. Uh, on my property, they brought up caterpillars without my permission and they bulldoze Aspen groves down, they bulldoze big palm trees down. They're not going to worry about access. The emergency people are going to go in and do their thing. And I don't think there's a landowner in this room or up there that wouldn't welcome and be up there and say, come on through. This is how you get to here, this is how you get to there. So I don't think that's a big problem. Um, I think we have a problem with, uh, I do thinning on my land every year. It costs me thousands of dollars and Ryan Anderson from the state is very helpful and we, we thin them out and we're trying to keep it good. Um, it's, we want, in my opinion, we want to keep the mountain as pristine as we can because that's all we have in Casper to look at is the face of the mountain and, and we want to keep it as pristine as we can. Place is up by Hoganown and we're by the Merkin Town on that. That's where the commercial development should go. Uh, we, we, we don't have any water stations on the mountain. We don't have any dump stations that I know of. And that's a real problem. And that's a problem we had before all this came up. That's if we're going to have more campgrounds, we need to get some dump stations and I'm not against campgrounds, I'm kind of for, um, development that can be pleased, okay? Because if we get people camping all over like, no, we don't have any rules about campers and that was something we talked about a couple of years ago. And everybody can put campers wherever they want, they can drain their sewage wherever they want. I didn't see anything in this plan about that, what I read. So that's another thing that we need to look at. Um, we, I'm, I'm all for positive development of the mountain, make it more modern, more nice. A grocery store would be great, all that kind of stuff would be great. But, um, I would like to see the new draft so we could really see what the problems are. And, and another thing that'd really be nice is a list of the problems that we're talking about that we have, instead of changing the whole thing from 2004, just address the problems that we have and figure some common sense goals with it and look back to that. And I appreciate your time and, and listening to me tonight and I look forward to you guys doing some talking.
Thank you for coming up. Was you, anybody have any questions for, for Rob?
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you might have to switch that over up.
I didn't catch Doug in time, but he was, I could hear him.
There you go. Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission staff, thank you for having this meeting. Uh, my name is John Cornquinn. Uh, my address, 1650 South Walnut Street, Casper, Wyoming. I'm a landowner on Casper Mountain. I'm a manager of Bottom Rock LLC. We have quite a few acres up there and I'm, uh, listening to all the questions. It doesn't sound like we're quite ready to, to vote on this one. There's quite a few changes. Uh, but one of the things that I'm concerned about, uh, affects my property and my plans. So this body's, uh, heard my, my views on development and, uh, and my future plans on development for my own properties. And this prop, and this plan goes directly against what I'm, uh, trying to do and that's the, if I'd like to point out an area?
Yeah, certainly.
Prior, last time, this used to be the residential, it's all MR2, which allows five acre parcels. This was all MR2 before. It is currently, and so the use plan was the yellow. And now my property's right here and it's limiting my property, my ability to develop, uh, now down to 10 acres versus five acres, which I haven't made my mind up what we're going to do exactly for that. But, uh, to take my ability and my, my income away from me, uh, doesn't sit really well. I'd, I'd ask you to make at least, uh, those changes back to what we had. I feel like, it almost feels like you're being, uh, isolate, or singled out, I should say, when, when I, when people know you're going to plan on doing something, including the public, uh, and that there's people that do not want development up on the mountain. I appreciate that. But, uh, it does feel like a taking from the government when you change the use and the ability to go down to whatever it might be, five acres in this case, uh, to 10 acres. It, it does affect the bottom line for me. Uh, and I, I ask for you to, uh, change that back, at least that area. Uh, I don't see a need that's not in the, uh, eagle or whatever, uh, protection area that they have in there, the critical eagle, uh, area. It's not part of that. Uh, there's, there's water. It's actually one of the better places in, on the mountain to develop, uh, because there's water there, there's, uh, access there. We're getting another access point put in there so it won't be strictly archery range road, that type of thing. We're, uh, all in favor of all the things that, uh, Mr. Haupt brought up, all the, uh, fire issues. Uh, we, I've been up here before to say that we've, we need to do something about the fire issues up there. I'm very concerned because we have the camp, campground right next to us. So we're very aware of, of the effects that a fire could do and without water on these campgrounds, what that can do. Uh, people are not putting out their fires correctly often, often, and, uh, I believe there should be some pump stations up, uh, on each campground. And that, that particular area is an area you could actually, uh, find water and I think that's a really needed item. Uh, but that's, my major objection is, uh, you're affecting my, my ability to, uh, make money and, uh, use my property how I want to use it. That's how we bought it. Uh, we bought it, bought it at a premium price for that purpose and I ask you to change that back. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for John? Thank you, John.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just make a note too, for everybody to remember that, again, the plan's not rules, that, that's not our zoning map. We're not, we haven't rezoned anyone's property. We won't be, this plan doesn't automatically rezone property. It's merely making recommendations. Mr. Cornquinn, I wasn't, I didn't exactly see where your property was on there, but is it kind of stuck in between the preservation area and the residential and rural?
Right here.
So it's right on the border of some of the colors?
And it wasn't in, it was right in the middle, it was right, uh, that was all yellow before.
All yellow before.
And, and also I can say as for a public, looking at this map without, without, uh, section lines, it's really hard to know where you're at.
Yes.
I particularly know because you can pick it out with archery range, but I, I went in this today actually and asked them to, the GIS to.
We're working on.
To put an overlay because as a landowner, if it, uh, if it's going to change the use of your property, one, I think you need to be notified by this body that, uh, yes, they're not changing the zoning, but this is a, this is the stepping stone to changing the zoning as you already indicated. So, so we need to know as a public that we need to protect ourselves and, and if you're changing the use of our property, we need to be notified of that. Everybody that's getting changed should be notified.
Right, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Cornquinn. So I guess I would say if the, if your zoning of your property were to change, yes, we, the county would provide notification, we'd have public hearings. We've made some modifications to this land use map, but I would say future land use maps are fluid. Yes, this would be the map that the Planning and Zoning Commission would look at when you brought your subdivision application in and perhaps needed a zoning change. You know, future, like I said, future land use maps are fluid. I think that you look at it on the case, that case itself, the facts that are in front of you when you receive an application and take a look at your future land use map and say, well, here is an area, it has, he's in between, you know, it's got rural, it's got residential indicated right next to it and what's going to be the best fit for that area? This, these lines aren't meant to be solid following property lines, oh, your property gets to be residential and mine has to be rural. It, it's trying to bring all of those opinions, as you said, together on a map for the community to just try to say what they want to see on the mountain. So I wouldn't say that just because a portion of your property is now in the light green instead of the yellow, that that says we're going to rezone you and you're going to be limited to 10 acre minimum lot sizes or for sure you'd be denied if you ever brought an application before this board or the county commissioners. So we just hesitate to have that stance out there because this is definitely not a zoning map. It's definitely not changing anybody's use of their property as it is today.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelly Boyle. I own, my wife and I own property on the, the West Standoff Coats Road on the face of the mountain. And again, I can echo what Doug said is I haven't seen, I've got, I'm not on the top of the mountain where a lot of people are affected by, I'm out kind of remote on the end. Actually, I'm on the end, but I think my western border is the end of the MR, the outside end of where, what you guys, and it's inaccessible. And I'm concerned about access on my own property, be able to get to areas of my property, whether it be trails and it, and the visual aesthetics that, is there anything in here? Cause I haven't seen it on the visual aesthetics that could affect me from keeping, from doing something from the public of Casper. from the public of Casper, because it is a jewel up there. And I don't, I don't wanna put something in that is an eyesore to the public. There's some things that come off the mountain, like the pipeline that you see. And I don't know if there's laws that's gonna be into that. I bought it to be remote. But I do also wanna be able to access and have the liberty to do what I want on my property. So, I don't know about that. I'm also concerned about public and campgrounds on top because, if there's fires up there and there's no way to put 'em out, the public, there's a skill set there that they're gonna look what they're gonna do. And if they're in a hurry, they're gonna leave it. And everything's gonna come downhill or either downwind on me. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about, I, I missed the meeting on the mountain at Hogedon. I think it was because I spent too much time up there the last three years trying to get lights on that mountain. But the, uh, I really never had a list of what the problems were with why this came up. It seemed like there was some hidden agendas to me, and I was concerned about that. And I'm still concerned about that. It's kinda like you watch this website, hoping that maybe this draft, is it on the website? This new draft?
It is.
Okay, I didn't see it. I, I, but I hadn't checked it this week, so. So, there was that. There was the, uh, laws and decisions on anything on the face of the mountain, whatever would affect us. And the protection of people that are downstream from the top, whether it be campgrounds or contamination, because it put, it is a pretty solid piece of granite that has only so much water flow coming down. And we can, we can be affected on the lower parts of it. My property is basically on the bottom of the trees going up, but it doesn't go over the top. So, those are the areas that I am interested in, and I am interested in having some time to review this. So, I don't know how, what the timeframe was on it, but it seemed like it was pretty quick for me. But that's the way everything is. Everybody's hurrying up and waiting. And then all of a sudden, we gotta make a decision, so. I'd like to know what the problems were that we're trying to address. At least those listed ones, because I've been, again, following this for a couple of years now. So, or what, what areas that, um, the outfit that you guys hired, what their solutions were to those problems? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any further questions for Mr. Boyle? Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else in the, oh.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, staff, my name's Don Davis. I have property at 8959 Lazy Lane on the mountain, and I reside in Casper. I feel as though this is being pushed through pretty quick on us. I know it goes back to last fall. But I guess I'm wondering about the process and the procedure of tabling this tonight. As I understand, this is the last time you guys get to hear this. You pass it, goes to the Board of County Commissioners?
Who will put it out for a public, a 45-day public comment period?
Okay, okay, that's the process.
Yes.
All right. Um, is there anything that we can do in the interim? Table it tonight, contemplate it for a month with some of your interested parties here tonight and, and those that are for it? Find a small sampling of those folks. Come back next month and, and now what do we know? You know, do we deny it and do as, as been brought up before? Just identify a couple of the issues with 2004, clean 'em up. Whatever is irrelevant in that thing needs to come out. So, I just ask that you table it tonight, give it a little more consideration. I know it puts the 45 days from the county commissioners down the line of ways, but is there a rush? Are we in a hurry? Is there any compelling issue to pass it tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, uh, against this item tonight?
Hearing none, um, I'll move it to Commissioner Conversation.
Well, I've seen, I've been on this board about a year now or just over, and there's been a lot of stuff on the mountain. And it seems like a lot of it, issues go around roads, and it don't hardly address any of that in here. It just lists the county roads. I think that needs to be addressed a little better. And I kinda agree with Doug Help there that this should be a committee of people, vested people. Logan, the people that were hired don't have any investment in this except to get paid. I don't, I have a hard time when we hire outside sources, especially from out of state, out of county, and so on, to do these things. It does seem awful rushed. I think this should be tabled for a while. Some stuff is addressed on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Seale?
So, how long, how long was it on the website? I guess, how long was it posted?
So, this final public draft has been on the website since April 19th. And for anybody, all interested parties, uh, you can get on and sign up for notifications so that every time we post something on, we have a specific website on the county, a specific page on the county website, sorry, uh, just for this plan. And so, you can sign up and it'll email you notifications when a new document is posted, um, or when we ask for input. So, we had the open house on Hogedon, and, uh, before that, there was a, you know, kind of a preliminary public comment hearing, I guess you'd say, here with the, uh, with you all prior to that meeting. And then, we had all of the public open house materials on the website. I think we even, we say it on here too. So, there was our timeline there. So, September 14th, you all had a meeting and, and heard from people. I think that was the night. It was very, very snowy. And so, not very many people could come. Then we did the listening session on October 12th up at Hogedon. And all of those materials were on the website after that, uh, with the ability to, for people to comment, to make comments on the, the boards that were shown at the open house. And we had a questionnaire that was opened through November 12th, so a survey. And we left that open through, uh, November 12th. Then we had the big idea board. We asked people to share their ideas for the future of Casper Mountain. That went through November 30th. And then, we had another open house in February. And that was when we put out the first draft of this plan for public comment. And we left that open, um, through March 7th. So, um, I know not everybody has good internet access up on the mountain, but, uh, we, like I said, I think we really strived to get public feedback. There's only so much we can do. And, uh, you know, I'm not one, I don't like to sit at the meeting and eat all the cookies myself. I would love people to come and give us their comments. If you can't come to the meeting, get online. If you can't get online, come visit us at our office, because I'm willing. And that's, I think, we want to hear that. I think you all want to hear their feedback. Staff wants to hear their feedback. Logan Simpson wants to hear their feedback. Um, I know their main office is out of state, but the team assigned to our, uh, project are here in state. They live in Wyoming. They're from Wyoming. They've been planners in Wyoming. So, I wouldn't say they're out of state people that are just coming in and telling us, uh, what we need to do. And, you know, the, the idea to update the plan was just before I came, uh, but I think it was a good idea. By tabling it tonight, you, we will delay adoption of our updated zoning regulations, which I think the county desperately needs. These regulations we have now are difficult to implement. And if you see applications in front of you on the mountain before we get those new rules, it's possible the same issues that you've dealt with for the past few years are gonna come back roaring in front of you, because we don't have good answers on campground development standards. We don't have good mitigation standards for, on visual buffers and visual impacts. And that's the kind of thing we need in our zoning rules. And in order to make rules that meet the goals of the community, we need our plan updated.
Is it, is it possible, as we look at the schedule, to do the 45-day advertisement and public comment before it comes to planning and zoning?
I might defer to Ms. Reed, but it's generally, you all make recommendations to the board to adopt amendments to a plan. And then, the Board of Commissioners takes those recommendations, reviews them, makes any changes they want to the plan, and then they put it out for public comment. And like, as I said earlier, you all still have, and the public, everybody has the ability to make comments during that public comment period. And when we come back and have the public hearing with the board, they'll take those comments. And if we make substantial changes, we're gonna have to put 'em back out for a public comment period. So, so, but, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, 45 days is the minimum. So, it has to be at least 45 days prior to the county commissioners' meeting.
Other commissioner comments?
So, I guess my, yeah, so when you, you, so it's put it on the website, then do you send, like, how do you notify people that it's on the website, yes?
So, they do have to go out and sign up to get those, those notification emails. I'm defaulted in there, so I get them every time we post something. It's posted on the news feed, on the main page of the county website. We try to get it on the county Facebook page. You know, I'm not as familiar, but if any of you know local radio shows, we can go on together and talk about it. I mean, I'm all for it, because I don't think, we want to get this out to as many people as we can. And, uh, and tonight, it's showing me that maybe not as many people knew about it as we thought knew about it. But I don't think it was, uh, on lack of effort of your part or staff or Logan Simpson. It's just, it's difficult to reach people, I, I think.
My just concern that, you know, not a lot of people know about it, and then it gets out, and then there's just huge, well, of discontent about this.
Or misinformation.
Do we get 45 days? And how long do they, do they then email? Is that how they make a public comment? Do they, do they email or?
They can, they can email, they can call us, they can write a letter, they can come to the public hearing. Any, any way they wanna give their feedback, I'll take it.
I can give you some help on getting, yeah, you can get free TV notifications.
Right.
Channel 15.
That'd be awesome.
I can give you an email or something like that. But that's my only concern, is that, you know, we, is that happening? I don't know how many.
Right.
Oh, actually, is this four out of, you know, 300 people that knew about it, or is it four out of 100 that knew about it? And so, my, my concern is that we end up, have to throw that forward and ask them.
I don't disagree. And perhaps, maybe, uh, I was thinking, maybe we could work with Logan Simpson to put together maybe a sum, a summary of the goals and policies, um, section, because that's gonna be the biggest implications from this plan. And, and really, again, I wanna go back to, the 2004 plan was a good plan. They spent a lot of time, the people that worked on that, there was a lot of effort put into that. And in no way did we wanna just throw that out. And I don't think at all, we did. We took out, there's a lot of information in there, inventory, resource information. That's great information, but it kinda bogs down the plan and people can't get through all of that. So, we took some of that out, put some of it in appendices. But what we really asked at these public engagement meetings and on the website was, are these goals and policies that are in the 2004 plan still applicable today? And what do we need to change to make sure we are covering what we need to cover? And I, I heard some comments, what were the problems? There were problems. I don't think there were any problems with the 2004 plan. I think we just wanted to make sure, and Logan Simpson wanted to make sure, that the plan accurately reflected current conditions on the mountain as they are now in 2022 versus 2004.
Can I, can I, can I, oh, it's, it's not, is, can, may I be?
Yes, yes, yeah, come on, Kelly.
Well, I'm a resident of Casper Mountain, and the internet service is very poor. I don't have a computer at my home, so I, I rely on my work computer. I think most of the residents on Casper Mountain could probably say they don't have internet access. So, to be entered, to be notified through the web is kinda counterproductive in, in this rural setting, especially the mountain. I'm on the face of the mountain, but I'm down in a, in a, it, it all overshoot, it shoots over the top of me. So, if it wasn't for my phone, I'd be completely remote. And sometimes, I wanna leave my phone and down, so.
I, I don't disagree. And we, you know, we,
That's, that's a problem of notifying us.
Definitely. And I think we tried, you know, we tried to address that.
Thank you.
Myself, thank you, Mr. Chairman, myself. And, uh, I think at least one Logan Simpson person are in the Casper Mountain Landowners Association Facebook page. Um, I know I made a comment on there. Hey, if you, there are some that had issues with our survey at one time. I said, "If you can't get on the survey, come down to our office. I'll print it out for you and I'll sit there with you if you want while you fill it out." You know, or print it and mail it to us. Call me and I'll write down your answers. You know, I'll, I'd say, we'll do whatever it takes to get the comments from people. If you can't get on the internet, if you can't get on the computer. So, I don't think we're trying to not take public comment. It is just, it's a struggle to get out to everybody and notify everybody and make them aware of what we're working on.
Now, I'm, um, I'm just one, one vote on, on the board, but as, as I make a recommendation to the county commissioners, I think the public comment weighs heavily on, uh, kinda as a litmus test, if you will. Is, is this a good regulation? And what things have we missed? And what things can we improve upon? And, uh, I depend, depend on hearing that, that public comment in order, so I can give a good recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I think Megan's brought up, uh, several excellent ideas where she could reach out, the department could reach back out to, uh, some mountain residents and, and hear, solicit some comments. Those are, I guess, my comments that, yes, we could, I think, reach out and get some, some input and, uh, and make this a, a good recommendation and a solid document that we could forward to the Board of County Commissioners. I think Megan's got a great plan, uh, to be able to, to do that.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just, and Commissioners, I'd just like to add, a lot of the comments, you know, I don't think tonight's the venue where we need to do that. But I definitely encourage everyone who made comments, um, to reach out to you all and to my office. And we can go over some of the questions and issues and things that may or may not be addressed. You know, specifically talking about facilities and services and roadways. There's an entire, we did include an entire section in there about, um, requiring individual developers and property owners to secure water supply and sewage disposal with priority given for shared water systems. Continue to maintain county roadways. All of their roads and accesses should be built and maintained by property owners, developers, owners associations, and improvement service districts. Maintaining established access points and egress routes or creating alternative routes in case of emergencies. I think a lot of that stuff, when people look at this plan, will find that it's been addressed. And again, that's what the public comment period time is for. And as Ms. Reed said, you know, we put it out for 45 days and people come back and they have heartburn, and we need to make changes. We can do that, and we'll put it back out for 45 days after that. But, you know, that's the intent of the statute and what, and the 45-day public comment period after we've been through the whole process that we've been through to develop the draft that we have.
Thank you, Megan. Any other comments from board members up here? Well, we've got, um, three options, I guess, to either approve, deny, or table. So, what's the board's pleasure?
I'd make a motion to just table it and try and get some additional information. I just wanna, I'd like to make sure that we've, we've got as many comments as we can before we forward it out. And that would be my, sort of my motion to either table it and maybe put it on the next agenda, you know, the next month. And try to make as much comments we can for people and, and.
I think it should be tabled too, and I think there should be some type of, you have all these comments that come in as one, but you got six people there that could probably work as a group and, you know, one person's idea, the other person never thought of and think, huh, that probably would be a good idea. So I think as a, more of a group, working as the people on the mountain, I think it needs to be tabled also. And the road issues need to be addressed. A lot of these deals from the past were just because of public access roads, which may or may not have been public access roads.
So do you need official motion?
I took that, I took yours as, as a motion to, to table.
I'll second it.
We got a motion that's first and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor of tabling the item signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for coming and sharing your opinions. Like to open the public hearing for MS twenty-one dash oh five, the Waterman Major Subdivision. With that, could we get a staff report?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman, Board. Actually, first can we get a motion to remove it from the table? Because I believe the last action you all took on this one was tabling.
I remember we committed for our subdivision.
Yep, MS twenty-one dash oh five.
And why is that?
It, staff, would you remind us why, why it was tabled?
I believe from my review of your minutes from last year, it was that they, you all wanted to see a chapter twenty-three study, this chapter twenty-three study completed before you reviewed it, and the chapter twenty-three has been completed and received recommendation from DEQ.
Those, was that the only condition?
I think there was something about, it may be in here, I don't know, I haven't read it all, but County Casper Alkova Irrigation District.
They've been notified.
And what did they say?
I have no.
We'll get it off the table.
Yeah, then we'll have discussion.
So we got a first to remove it from the table, do I have a second to remove it from the table?
No second.
All those in favor would signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Now that it's off the table.
All right.
We can begin the good point of order there, appreciate that. Let's consider the Waterman, and with that, a staff report and specifically maybe the outstanding items from the last time when it was tabled.
Mr. Chairman, case number MS twenty-one dash zero zero five. The Waterman Major Subdivision, applicant is Donald Hollensworth and his agent, WLC Engineering, and he is proposing to subdivide fifty-seven point three six acres into five parcels, each approximately ten acres in size. It's located on the south side of Garbert Road, approximately two and a half miles west of the intersection with Thirty-three Mile Road. It's currently zoned urban agriculture, and there's no change in zoning requested or required. The minimum lot size is ten acres, and the property is currently vacant. And to the north, south, and east are homes on larger acre tracts, also zoned urban ag. And to the west are vacant irrigated grasslands, also zoned urban ag. The water source, I have proposed Thirty-three Mile Water District and individual septic systems for sewage disposal. And I have, staff has planning considerations for you tonight. And then we can review from the previous meeting where it was tabled. So first, the thirty-three feet of Garbert Road that lies within the subdivision needs to be dedicated as public right-of-way with the lot sizes adjusted accordingly. They need to provide shared approaches onto Garbert Road to reduce the number of accesses onto the county road, as well as submit approved approach permits from County Road and Bridge approving the locations for the shared access easements and revise the plat to show those as approved by Road and Bridge. Provide the instrument number for the twenty-foot wide public access easement on the west side of Lot Four. Provide a letter from Thirty-three Mile Water District stating they're willing to provide water to the subdivision and also apply for and receive a permit to construct from DEQ for construction of the water system within the subdivision. They need to submit their required perk tests and information to the internal county health department. Submit a preliminary disclosure statement for review, a copy of any proposed covenants and the homeowner association documents. And there are some cosmetic changes to the plat, as well as some surveying, review, and verification. And then submit a subdivision improvements agreement, providing for construction and payment of all or part of the required public improvements for review and approval by the development department of applicable, as well as the irrevocable letter of credit and amount not less than hundred twenty-five percent of the estimated cost of unfinished improvements if needed. And with those considerations, staff when completed, staff would recommend approval of the major subdivision plat. And let me pull up those minutes from the last.
Have you received some of those planning considerations already, or are those still outstanding planning considerations?
Our Casper Alkova Irrigation District has reviewed the plat. I haven't received any specific recommendations from them. And the chapter twenty-three DEQ study was completed, and they received a non-adverse recommendation. And that letter and recommendation is included in your packet tonight.
I think just, this one point is probably an important one. In the DEQ letter, the very bottom paragraph, it says, "The proposed water system is to connect to the Thirty-three Mile Improvement Service District via service lines constructed by the developer." Thirty-three Mile Improvement and Service District has, has provided information saying that they have capacity and are willing to supply water to this development. So I just wanted to, I, I do recall that being a conversation at the, at the last go around, and it looks like Thirty-three has provided evidence that they could provide water and DEQ.
I think the, I think that was in there last time too, that they could provide water. But the problem is there's no pressure. And that was a question of, can they adequately supply the water?
I recall, I recall listening to that in the meeting video. And I guess, you know, a staff's response to that is DEQ has reviewed the information that Thirty-three Mile provided to them with the chapter twenty-three study. And if any of the users within that water district have issue with pressures or supply of water, then that's something they need to address with the district board and perhaps DEQ. But with the application in front of you all this evening, you have the recommendation and letter from DEQ that they've reviewed all this information they needed. And they're saying that the Thirty-three Mile Water System is adequate to provide service to the subdivision.
You've not heard from Casper Alkova Irrigation District, either way?
I have not.
I think the issue on that before was when somebody's water system shut down, it caused flooding on this property. And that's an issue that Casper Alkova Irrigation District needs to address when that happens. They're supposed to prevent that from happening. And that's in their rules that if somebody's system shuts down, they need to address where the water's going.
In the irrigation district rules?
Hey, there's a place. There's a property, way I understand, north of this property. If his sprinkler shuts down, then that excess water that he's using runs out all onto this property, from what I understand. And I'm sure they're aware of that, that they need to address that. And maybe the owner too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
What does mean?
I, I would agree. That's definitely an issue for the landowners out there and other surrounding property owners, but I don't think that it's necessarily something that we can address through our subdivision regulations or something that you all could require as approval in this subdivision.
While you're looking for that, Megan, so the, the adjustment of the lot sizes, I'm assuming that would mean the lots would shift to the west, the lot lines would shift to the west slightly to, to get our ten acre pieces?
Correct, they're going to have to take out of the larger piece to get the ten acres on every easement.
And so the, there's a twenty-foot wide private access easement, is that, is that for a parcel that's further to the, the south? See the one between four and five?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what that easement is.
We could, we could ask the applicant.
And that's what, ask the applicant, and, and that's why it'd be good to have that instrument number so somebody could pull it and see who that easement is in favor for, favor of.
My concern was, as, as that property line shifts, does that change the, I mean, that would change the character of Lot Four somewhat because then that easement is more in the middle of the lot, or maybe not the middle, but the edge of the lot rather than, right on the edge. But, sorry, gentlemen, while Megan was, she was looking for the other reasons we seem to be breaking the cobwebs loose on what items were. What other comments does the Board have?
Why my question is just, so it's the opinion of our staff that they've met the, the requirements of the, of the major subdivision as far as DEQ and, and?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mitchell, yes. With, so staff would recommend approval upon completion of all planning considerations. So once the considerations in your case sheet have been met, they will have met the subdivision standards per our resolution. I'm looking at my notes in the minutes from your August twenty twenty-one meeting. There is discussion on the irrigation that your water that you're all discussing. However, there's no water rights associated with this land, these lands. So I'm still learning about irrigation here. But there's no action that the applicant needs to take to divest or get rid of because, because there's no water rights associated with this property. If there's an issue with somebody's irrigation system going down and causing flooding on this property, then I think that, yes, it's, it's definitely something that the landowners out there need to contact Casper Alkova Irrigation District and, and figure out a plan of what's, what's going on and how they can mitigate that situation.
Provided this item either got a do pass or a do fail recommendation, Casper Alkova, would they still have opportunity to make a comment prior to the Board of County Commissioners if they had recommendations?
Right, they can still, they could still contact us, they were provided a copy of the plat with the utility review memo. And then the Board will still have a hearing prior to them approving it.
What other, any other questions of staff before we call the folks forward?
There is also, in, septic must be high performance because of the high water table. However, nothing was stated in the DEQ letter. And a booster station for meter pits, five taps. And that, again, that'll be the permit to construct with Thirty-three Mile Water District and everything they need to do.
I apologize, I did, there was a, there's going to be five taps?
Right, for, one for each lot. And there's notes in, in your previous meeting minutes about a booster station for the five, for the meter pits, for those five taps. So that must, I think, that was a discussion related to Thirty-three Mile Water District and their ability to provide water. Yeah, so that will be something they'll need to address, users in the district with DEQ and, and that permit to construct and the plans they submit to DEQ.
So the way I read that is Thirty-three Mile, it doesn't say in this that, but earlier they said they would provide booster pumps. Is that what we're understanding this?
The minutes are saying Mr. Hollensworth stated that he, that they would have booster stations for the meter pits. And I guess I can't answer that question if that's what it will be. He's going to have to, they will have to submit, Thirty-three Mile will have to submit their design to DEQ for review, and DEQ would issue the permit to construct.
Mr. Hollensworth is here, maybe when he comes forward, you could clarify any questions we have on that. Well, with, with that, let's call those in favor of the application forward to speak to the Commission.
My name is Don Hollensworth, I'm here to answer questions hopefully. If I could start out, the Casper Thirty-three Mile Alkova Irrigation, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Thirty-three Mile Water District has installed a booster station on the system. The system currently has ninety pounds of pressure on the main. The water taps are already in on the lots. I don't know, maybe I've, it'll get organized, but, um, I guess, to answer the question as far as Casper Alkova District irrigation goes, there's no water associated with this parcel now. But the water runs downhill and there's old ditches that it runs through, but there, it's not a problem to reroute the water down, the old Kendrick Ditch down to the, the ditch alongside the road, and then it runs down, crosses over, and connects with Casper Creek. The, um, Western, Western, Weston Engineering and WLC did the chapter DEQ twenty-three study. And in that study, they, there was two, well, there actually nine-foot dilt, nine-foot deep silt trenches that were open for thirty-six hours. And there was no groundwater showed up in either trench in thirty-six hours. The perk tests are twenty to forty per minute inch. They're completed by WLC, so that, this lot size, it leaves, typically they compute at about three hundred and forty gallons a day per typical residential status. So those figures, these lots, ten acres and bigger, are large enough to accommodate a system and it, and if it need be, install another system, another septic system. Typical, the recommended size for these septic systems would be about eleven hundred square feet, be that either infiltrator or square gravel bed. I'll put my glasses back on here. Oh, you, you had talked about the easement. There's, this tract was like thirty-nine point eight acres, very seldom is the tract to land exactly forty acres. So there, there, out of the seventeen acres, there's actually just a small strip that goes up the side that completes the, the ten acre tracts. And the easement for the residents to the south is actually on seventeen acres. It doesn't affect these four lots. I don't know, I, I, I wasn't writing quite fast enough, I guess. Did you have any other questions for me, or?
Mr. Hollensworth, so the, that access easement, that accesses the property to the?
South, correct, yes, sir.
It's actually, it's not located on the lot line, it's actually on Lot Seventeen?
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, Lot Five?
Yes, sir, well, that, that, the easement for that is, is already in, and it's on the seventeen acres, yes, sir.
So we could, we could adjust the plat wherever that easement properly lies?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Did you also indicate that the Thirty-three Mile Water and Sewer, the five taps, do exist, they're already in place?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I don't, I got an ear infection, I can't hear.
No, you're good, you're good. I just asked if the five taps were in place.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What other questions did we have, Mr. Hollensworth?
I think there, well, I have it covered.
Oh, and I guess just to reiterate, you said that tailwater that comes off of the property adjacent, should Casper Alkova come back with a comment that that tailwater needed to be accommodated? There is an old. There is an old ditch that it can go down and get down to?
Oh, yes, sir. The original, that was all irrigated with ditches. And that's, those ditches are still there, so that's where it goes. What, typically, what happens is there's, the pivot above me runs about eight hundred gallons a minute. And if it goes down in the middle of the night, that water still comes. And so we'd have to have a place to go. And that, that's just kind of the path it follows, but it's not any problem to run it down the old Kendrick ditch and run it down onto the easement. And it'll, well, you, obviously you know exactly where it's at. It goes down and crosses under, under the garbit and goes, and goes down and connects with, through Bresser's and hooks up Casper Creek.
So does that go across lot five? That drain ditch or is it?
No, it's, it's on my property to the, to the west.
Oh, it's further, further west?
To the west, yes, sir. Huh?
So it, does it, it, does the tail water come across this subdivision or does it not?
Oh, it can, but it doesn't have to.
Oh, so you, it could be routed?
Oh, yeah, easy. I just gotta, it's got the old, the old line. I just have to switch it over. It actually comes down the west of that seventeen acres.
To the west, so it's not part of this Johnson diversion draw?
Well, that would be the, yeah, the, the old, the old lateral. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I see now. Thank you.
Oh, no worries.
What other questions would the board may have? Thank you, Mr. Hollinsworth.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else willing or wanting to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Last and final call for anyone coming to speak in favor. Those wishing to speak in opposition of the subdivision, please come forward.
My wife Linda and I'm Glenn. We live east of this five little lots.
And your address is?
One, two, two, seven, five Garbit.
Thank you, sir.
What, he talking about the water can be diverted. Well, all, last year I had water coming across them five lots into my property. I got a little ditch there. It goes down there to the county road and then it goes down along the county road. And there's a lot of water coming. It'll come out of the ditch, come on my place where I got a lot of alkali down there. But I can't dry it up because it's got water all summer long. And as far as, oh, thirty-three, I don't know what pressure they gave you for the water line, if they did. I don't know. I got fourteen pounds at my house. And then all my neighbors got about the same and even up on the thirty-three mile road. So we ain't got a lot of pressure. I got a, I got a little pump motor in the house that'll give us water to enjoy it. But other people say if they turn the faucet on in the kitchen, then they try to go to the bathroom or something, they ain't got any water in there. So the water problem is a water problem. And there's one, uh, pressure pump that's on that line. But it's, but it's going down the line where the president lives and I know he's got water pressure and nobody else does. Now, I heard that, well, this will have to come up with a thirty-three mile meeting. But I heard somebody would give him the land if they want to put another pump house in. But I don't know where that goes or whatever, but we don't need no more people down that road. Any questions?
This irrigation water issue, is that all the time or is it only when somebody's?
It's in the summertime.
So the whole season, the whole irrigation season?
Huh?
The whole irrigation season, not just when somebody's pivot goes down?
Well, can't say that for sure, but, you know, I never watch his pivots running. So, but we do, I do have water coming on my place. And the rules of the thirty-three, if you're gonna do something with your tailing water, you gotta do it instead of your damn neighbors. But I just let that pass, but, you know, there ain't much you can do about it.
Well, the irrigation district's supposed to take care of it.
Oh, I know they are, but.
So it's coming across what would be shown as lot one or the east edge of his property or the western boundary of your property is where that tail water's coming across?
Yeah. It's, it's coming across the, what is that, fourteen acre plot? Whatever number five is, I think, the big one?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, about, about three quarters of the way down, it starts coming across the four of the lots. And about where the, oh, where the writing is on the boundary line, it'll come there and it'll go toward the county road. Then it'll go down the county line. There's a culvert on my place, but it also floods my place. Then all the water goes that way underneath the culvert.
Okay.
Okay?
Other questions? Thank you for coming forward.
Way to go, Matt. Don't ask me nothing. Thanks.
Any others in the audience calling second call, anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Third and final call for anyone calling for comments in opposition, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner comments?
Jason, could I address?
Oh, excuse me, yes. The applicant may be given some rebuttal with that, Mr. Hollinsworth. No, we prefer you come up to the mic.
Well, I guess first thing to say is I definitely want to be a good neighbor. So, but the, the water main now has ninety pounds pressure. Problem is all the meter pits have a thirty-five pound pressure reducing valve. So it, thirty-five pound, thirty-five pounds of pressure, when you run a water line a quarter of a mile, you're not gonna have much water. So I mean, I know there's nothing they can do about that. The main, I'm a licensed utility contractor and licensed utility installer is what I do for a living. And you can't, you know, you start getting much more pressure than that. You start, you know, gasket starts leaking on the line and that's about all you can do. And they do have ninety pounds on the main. So, I mean, as far as if Casper or the thirty-three mile road and improvement would let people take those pressure reducing valves out of there and increase the pressure on the line, it would obviously, you could almost triple the pressure in the line. But there's, there's thirty, pressure reducing valves in the pits that are thirty-five pounds. That's in your contract with the water district. And as far as the alkali on the ground, it is a problem. But I mean, this is about five minutes with the backhoe and there's no more water.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd be willing to work with Casper Alkova to freshen up the ditch or whatever to take care of that tail water?
Oh, no, I mean, I'll just, I'll just divert it back into the, into the, into the canal, but.
And you wouldn't be, would you be opposed to that being a planning consideration that we might add to this?
It's five minutes.
Thank you.
I've just got to put a bucket full of ditch, one dirt and dig five feet to the ditch and away it goes. But I mean, it doesn't, Tony is my next door neighbor and as long as everything goes okay, it's not a problem. But when, you know, my system's set up for about, I run right at six hundred fifty gallons a minute. And so when another eight hundred gallons a minute starts showing up, I mean, obviously it really floods me out. I mean, it, it runs down the road and it's a big hassle, so I'm not a big fan of it either. But they do have a plan. I don't have to talk to the, Kate for a while, but the plan is to put all that in twenty inch. To do away with all the valves, to pipe it all twenty inch. And I don't know if they ran out of money or where that is in the plan, but I'd assume it's probably a couple of years down the road now. But one of these days they're gonna do away with all this and pipe all that whole end. It'll be all twenty inch, but like I said, right now I'll be more than happy. I want to be a good neighbor. I don't, I certainly don't want to cause him any grief. If I would have, you know, known about this, if I could just went over and shook his hand across the fence and said, no problem, man, it's done, it'd be done. But I said, it's not, so I want to be a good neighbor and, you know, try and make life easier for everybody. But anyway, that was all I was gonna say, that with the ninety pounds of pressure in that main, they can't increase that. When the, when the, you know, so when that booster station came online, that's how I was able to get the taps because I couldn't get that till they had the main pressure.
Any other questions from Mr. Hollinsworth while he's up here? Thank you, Don.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Don. Any further commission comments?
I don't know, somebody on Haynes Road wanted to put four lots in, and the thirty-three mile water district don't will and give you two taps. So, there's a lot of confusion here on this thirty-three mile water deal. And I know individual kind of right at the crest of thirty-three mile road, there's two houses there and if they both turn the water on, neither one have water. Yeah, I agree. It's definitely fixable, but I have a hard time with somebody buying this property not knowing all these issues such as irrigation water. And then they come back on S and A, you allowed this to happen. Even though it is in the rules that we can pass.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Zill, I'd say that's definitely something that, you know, whether you require him to do something. You know, I struggle with adding a planning consideration and having the staff with knowledge to go out there and say that he adequately diverted water. You know, we don't have that technical expertise on staff necessarily to say that he went out there and did that. But having the disclosure statement and that's recorded with the plat and it's disclose, you know, we can put almost anything you want in a disclosure statement to disclose to potential purchasers. Hopefully people are doing their due diligence when they go to look at a property, that's the intent of a disclosure statement. Hey, you get water from thirty-three mile water district. Maybe you should contact them about their water supply. Hey, irrigation water, no water rights are associated with this property. However, irrigation water has flowed across it in the past. You know, we can come up with language to add to something like that.
I'm, I'm open to any other conversation, but I think the tail water can be addressed through the expertise of the Casper Alkova Irrigation District. And, and I think they've adequately addressed here that there is some tail water issues. And Mr. Hollinsworth is agreeable to taking care of that tail water. So we'll just, I would recommend that we reach out to Casper Alkova and just have him confirm with Mr. Hollinsworth that they've addressed the tail water consideration and maybe that particular issue is addressed. The, the, to kind of summarize, the, the water pressure, it's, in my opinion, it's difficult to argue with the DEQ. DEQ and, and thirty-three have said they can, they can address this and it's hard to second guess there. But that's just my one opinion sharing with the, the board. With that, any other board comments?
So I think what I kind of understand is that, so they've met all the requirements from the zoning. There's the issue with the tail water and then Casper Alkova would then be the person, or would you just personally just, just do that? I guess I'm trying to understand just?
I would envision that Mr. Hollinsworth would, would correct the drainage to take care of the tail water. And Casper Alkova would go out and verify that. And then they're gonna let staff know that the tail water is taken care of. That way staff doesn't have to go out. Approve MS, MS twenty-one dash oh five?
Pending completion of all planning considerations.
Perfect. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor, signal, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Once the planning considerations will be completed, then it goes to the board accounting commissioners. So I would recommend if anyone wants to know what day that is to get with Megan and she would communicate that.
Correct.
Okay, with that, any public comment tonight? Hearing none. Commissioners com, comments? Anybody have any? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion for adjournment. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.